Well, welcome, everybody. I think we've got our three council members remote. Yes, okay. And with that, at six o'clock, all council members are present. So I'm going to call them. It's great to have you all here. Welcome, everybody. I'm going to call the meeting to order. We start with a moment of silence, an invocation which we observe by a moment of silence. So we stand for that. That's followed by the pledge of allegiance and then we'll take the roll. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Corliss.
Here.
Hallie Burton.
Here.
Morales.
Here.
Nash.
Here.
Ted.
Here.
Willetts.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Next up, we've got meetings, excuse me, meeting minutes from July 8th for approval.
Madam Mayor, first, I'm going to make a motion to amend, if that's a good pursuant to Idaho Code, Section 74-204, 4B. I move to accept and approve the amended agenda as posted. The amended agenda corrects a clerical error in Resolution 314-25. To clarify, the total amount of revenue generated by the proposal supplemental levy is $11 million as specified elsewhere within the proposed resolution.
I second the motion. We have a motion and second, clerk?
Ted.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
Corliss.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yeah.
All in favor, motion carries.
And then, Madam Mayor, I move approval of the minutes for the meeting on July 8th, 2025.
Second the motion. We have a motion and second, clerk?
Ted.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
Corliss.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yeah.
Just clarification, was that a yes?
Yes.
Thank you. All in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. So now we've got a couple of items under special business. Is Scott Raiber here? Didn't see him, but there's so many of you. All right. Is Scott online? Well, I've, thanks, Jamie. I've got the reappointment of Scott Raiber to our Open Space and Clean Water Advisory Committee for a three-year term ending July 18th, 2028. I want to thank Scott for his service on the Parks Board and on the Open Space Committee and for your willingness to serve again.
Madam Mayor, I ask unanimous consent for the reappointment of Scott Raiber to the Open Space and Clean Water Advisory Commission for a three-year term ending July 18th, 2028.
Without objection. Thank you, Scott. All righty, is Linda Mizzou here? Online? Nope, already. I also am proposing that we reappoint Linda Mizzou to the Parks and Rec Commission for a three-year term ending August 21st, 2028. I want to thank Linda for her service and for her willingness to be reappointed and to serve some more.
Madam Mayor, I ask unanimous consent for the reappointment of Linda Mizzou to the Parks and Recreation Commission for a three-year term ending August 21st, 2028.
Without objection. Thank you, Linda. All righty, so now we've got interim budget changes. Alicia, welcome.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. I'd ten interim budget changes for your consideration this evening. The first is from the Fire Department, and they're requesting approval of a budget-neutral grant appropriation totaling $228,000 to several grants that have been already accepted by council. These include grant funding from Ada County Emergency Management and State Homeland Security Grant Program for things such as specialized training and equipment and lithium ion battery fire suppression and trench rescue tools. The second item is related to the ERP project that was discussed at length at our June 24th Budget Workshop. This is a budget-neutral request supporting this project, but in fiscal year 2025, the request coming from finance, HR, and organizational effectiveness. The request is simply to begin the hiring process for eight limited-duration backfill positions and two permanent positions. We'd like to start onboarding these positions in '25, but as a reminder, the funding for the ERP project itself will be coming in the fiscal year '26 budget. The third request is from council, and it supports the addition of a dog park at the Charles F. McDivitt Youth Sports Complex. It's a $75,000 budget increase that's proposed to deliver the feature as originally envisioned. It would be offset by $35,000 reduction to the council's strategic planning contingency and a $40,000 transfer of regional park impact fees, as recommended by the Development Impact Fee Advisory Committee. The fourth request is from Planning and Development Services for $1.17 million to fund a second design phase for two federally-funded multi-use pathways, the Garden Street Pathway and the Broadway to Federal Way Pathway. Over 92% of this work will be reimbursed by federal grants with a local match coming from the open space levy funds that are already reserved for the project. This request also includes a $14,000 required upfront payment for Idaho Department of Transportation. The fifth request is also from PDS, and they are seeking a $125,000 appropriation to begin design work on a culvert replacement beneath the Albion Street Bridge. This area frequently floods, threatening the success of the Garden-Cassia pathway. So although the project itself is federally funded, this portion of the culvert is not within the scope of the project. So the funding would come from existing pathways capital, as well as neighborhood investment program funds. The sixth item is a transfer of $110,000 from Housing Projects and Special Activities Fund to the HUD Fund to cover administrative costs for the CDBG and home programs. The city has already reached its federal reimbursement caps within these activities, so this would just bring cash into that fund. It does not affect any of the affordable housing initiatives. Number seven is from Public Works. They're requesting a $400,000 budget-neutral increase in the Fleet Services Fund to cover higher-than-anticipated maintenance and operations costs. This is in response to an increased demand for fleet operations. The increase would be offset by additional revenue coming in from service revenue from departments, as well as $100,000 decrease to the personnel budget from vacancy savings. Public Works is also proposing $175,000 investment from the Geothermal Fund to extend the geothermal system to Boise State University's new material sciences building. BSU is funding the internal conversion of the building to geothermal heating, and the city is covering the pipeline extension. Construction will begin later this summer. The ninth request is from Public Works for approval of a $2 million one-time appropriation from the Water Renewal Fund to procure specialized equipment for the Lander Street Water Renewal Facility, its primary clarifiers, which are critical to the water treatment process. The equipment has a 28-week lead time, and so the funding is important now to keep the project on track. And then the final request is from Public Works, and it's for approval of a revenue-neutral grant appropriation for the city's watershed education center. It's a NASA grant that they received for $12,000 to host a professional development workshop for Idaho educators. And in collaboration with the University of Idaho and regional partners, the workshop will support climate and sustainability curriculum in K-12 classrooms. So with that, Madam Mayor and council members, those are the interim budget changes I have. Happy to take any questions.
Thanks, Alicia.
Madam Mayor, I move. I move approval of the interim budget changes as presented by staff.
I second the motion.
Madam Mayor.
We have a motion and a second.
Was that you?
It's Jimmy.
Sorry, Jimmy. Yes.
That's all right. Yeah, just a couple of comments here. And this will probably be a reoccurring theme that you hear from me tonight, but these are quite a few items on interim budget change. And really what I see with all these items is both a lot of hard work from staff. So I want to make sure that I thank the staff, the Finance Department, all of these different departments for both using creativity, finding these grants, solving problems, figuring out ways to get these projects done from pathways, you know, on Garden Street and Federal Way, to, you know, dog parks, to things for fire and things for Public Works. I think when things are tight, it's going to take a lot of creativity in these grants and the sort of flexibility and problem-solving from staff. I think it's going to be one of the ways we do it. So I just want to make sure that I thank everybody for all the hard work tonight.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I just also want to follow up on that comment. Obviously, there's a couple of things in here that are important to me, important to District 4. Talked about the Federal Way Pathway, how we've wanted that for a long time, really excited that that continues to move forward. I believe 2027 kickoff on that. And then also wanted to just briefly mention our ERP project, and ERP stands for Enterprise Resource Planning. And so all of the many pieces of technology that make our city run, whether it's HR payroll or purchasing, grant management, all of those kinds of things. We have a really old system, for those that aren't aware, and so a lot of manual things, a lot of things that our staff do really well, but moving forward into a new system that we'll be able to do a lot of different things more efficiently. Being able to have these temporary positions is really important. We'll have staff that need to continue doing their full-time jobs that they have now. That work still has to happen. While we also think about how we're going to do that differently with this new software, whatever is chosen. So really appreciate all the thought that's going into the resources we need to be able to pull that off well, because it has to be pulled off well, so we can continue to get things done the city is responsible for. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'd also like to just call out a couple of items here. There is quite a bit on the interim budget change. And happy to see for the Boise Fire Department, especially being able to move forward with the grants that they've received from state and county, especially for the fire suppression for lithium ion, lithium ion batteries, which has been of importance to the council to see how, especially as we have provided for a battery storage project, that we're able to also provide the support to the Fire Department to have the tools that they need in case there is a fire with those type of batteries. Also, for District 3 is the Cacha Garden Pathway. This will be the farthest, this is a key connection point. It'll be the farthest south to connect people to the Green Belt, which then creates the connection to downtown. Very excited to see this go forward. Happy to see that we were able to find the funding for the culvert as well to move the project forward. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Yeah. I'd like to echo my support for the interim budget changes. I am so thrilled that Charles McDevitt is getting finished. You know, we just had a presentation in the work session about neighborhood associations, and the Centennial Neighborhood Association has been here to counsel for the last few years, testifying on the importance of getting that project completed. And, you know, in that time, obviously, inflation's gone up and things that we want cost a little bit more money. And I'm really thankful to the Parks Department for, you know, helping to figure this out so that we could get what was promised there. I think it's going to be an incredible amenity. There's lots of other things in addition to the dog park, but I appreciate council funding this piece so that it can be whole.
All right. Thank you. Clerk?
Ted.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
Corliss.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. And this next item, we don't need a presentation. We're just going, this is a kind of operate-the-business piece where we need to, based on a planning and zoning condition, appoint Dan Williams to serve as mediator for CUP 25-22.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of the selection of Dan Williams to serve as mediator for CUP 25-22.
I'll second the motion. We have a motion and a second, clerk?
Ted.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
Corliss.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
All right, now we are on to the consent agenda.
Madam Mayor, I move the approval of the consent agenda without Resolution 314-25. I'd like to hear that separately.
Let's second the motion. We have a motion and a second. Clerk?
Ted.
Yes.
Willetts.
No.
Corliss.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Five in favor, one opposed, motion carries.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Before we move on there, I was trying to jump in. It doesn't always work when you're on Zoom, but there's a couple of items on the consent agenda, specifically item number four that has to do with access for electrical vehicle charging. That was a major grant that we got through the Federal Highway Administration. And just so incredibly important, because without the infrastructure to actually charge vehicles, we're not going to be able to get people to make that move over. And I think it's so important and something to highlight. Again, a lot of work went into that partnership, and it kind of shows the power of what having access to some of these federal-level grants can do. And then the second one, I think it's item number 14 on there, that has to do with a grant that we got from the United Nations. I can't remember a time that I've been on council when we grabbed that grant from the United Nations before, so pretty cool. And that grant is really for us to investigate how we might be able to use geothermal funding to help with multifamily housing with some of the billing that goes on there. So a really cool opportunity for us to study something that we haven't really been able to look at before. Again, you know, whenever there's these large grants, there's the complexity that goes on with those as well. And so again, creative thinking and hard work from staff on both of these to get those grants.
Thank you for calling those out. Clerk?
Madam Mayor, did we already have the roll call for consent?
Oh, we already had the, sorry, I got confused by, that's why you were saying Councilmember Hallie Burton that you were late. I was thinking, no, you weren't late. Gotcha. All right.
So, Madam Mayor, the next, I would make a motion to approve Resolution 314-25, which is the resolution calling for a supplemental levy for clean water pathways and open space to be placed on the November 4th, 2025 ballot.
I'll second the motion. We have a motion and a second. Discussion?
Madam Mayor, the way that I see this is as an investment in the health and well-being and the future of our community. It's about safe trails for our kids, clean rivers for generations to come, and the natural spaces that make this place feel like home. We're talking about more than just land acquisition, which I know that we've been successful at with the previous levy funds, but it's about quality of life. I think the identity of what it means to be, to live in Boise, to be visiting Boise. It's an investment in our mental health and the wildlife habitats and climate resilience. This levy will ensure everyone, no matter their neighborhood, has access to the outdoors and clean water. I appreciate staff's effort on bringing this forward, and I think the public for the overwhelming support that we received in correspondence leading up to this initiative, and I look forward to see what comes.
Madam Mayor, I'm looking forward to supporting this. I think, growing up here, I still remember being a kid at Holes Gulch and kind of learning that this area was set aside because of efforts of important community members that cared about protecting the space and making it somewhere that we could go, that we could connect with open space. And there's a lot of benefits that come with that. And so over the years, as we've passed similar levies as a community, it's been awesome to be able to see how those things have grown. We don't just have Holes Gulch. We don't have Hammer Flats. We don't have these specific areas. We have lots of areas, and our city continues to grow to be able to take advantage of those. I see this as an opportunity for the community to think about that next round of important investments that my kids will one day recognize potentially. So I'm excited to be able to kind of hear the community feedback on that and see those things, those ways that we can continue to preserve open space and protect our resources, especially our water, our river, and our water below. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Sure, go ahead. Councilmember Willetts?
Yeah, I'm going to support the motion. I think one of the things that makes Boise so unique is our park system and that we can actually see our foothills. And there are places in the West where, and throughout the other parts of the country, where you really can't see the natural habitat of mountains and foothills because of development. This has been something so unique to Boise that I think makes us really special. And the advantage of a levy is that taxpayers can choose whether they want to continue that. And so it will be their choice about whether they want to use their tax dollars to spend money for open space, and that's a powerful choice.
Madam Mayor, I'm happy to support this levy and so glad to see this come forward. I think when you ask people what they like about living in the city, they will talk about the Green Belt. They'll talk about the foothills, and these are all possible and pathways and our parks because, in a large part, because of the levies that have been secured. And for those who may not know, I want to call out that I think the city does an excellent job in not just having that levy funds to buy ground or to buy places, but they actually use that in conjunction with private partnership and donations to really maximize the funds that they receive. So it's not just the base amount of the levy. The city gets really creative and working to see what can we do to have the biggest impact for our residents of the city, and they do a great job. So I'm happy to support this tonight.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I can't see everybody right now, but when I first logged in, I could see a lot of folks coming in and saw a ton of folks in the audience. I don't imagine that they're all there for the budget, because we usually don't get this many people out of budget here.
They could stay for the budget.
I don't know if they will, but I just, I want to acknowledge all the work that's gone in from all the different nonprofit groups for these open space levy funds before in the past. These efforts really take the community coming together and really, oh, there they are, and really recognizing what open space means to a variety of different groups. And I can see several people that I recognize from several different organizations in the audience today. And so I, one, want to thank you for being there. I want to thank you for the work that you've done in the past, and I want to thank you for the work that I'm sure many of you will be working on together as this moves forward. I can see even more people now, even better. The other thing I just kind of want to bring up is what open space means, because I think that the definition has changed, and I think it maybe means a lot of different things to a lot of different people. Since, Madam Mayor, you were elected as the mayor, and I came on in council, we've adjusted what our open space levy funds can be used for. We've included pathways, and that wasn't something typically was there for in the past. And so when we think of open space, it can be a lot of things, and I think that we typically think of the Boise foothills. It's the most obvious thing. It's something that so many people in our community care about and something that we so deeply value, but it's also things in all parts of town. The Goddard Linear Pathway at By Capitol High School was funded through open space levy funds. The Hidden Hyatt Lakes Reserve in West Boise over in Councilmember Willetts' districts, funded by open space levy funds, sections of the Green Belt, pathway connections to parks, all these different types of things that actually make it possible for there to be open space, not just around town, but in the middle of town and in every single neighborhood. And to me, the thing that's so magical about open spaces is that there's places for everyone. You know, it's not a golf course that you have to pay a bunch of money to go to and make a reservation, and though there's only a certain group of people who may have access to it. Doesn't matter what your income level is, what part of town that you live in, these are your spaces. They're places of equality, places of equity, where everybody can go, everybody can be, and everybody can be equal in those spaces and enjoy them in the same way. So again, this is a very, very easy vote for me. I've seen the impact of what they've done before. I can envision what the impact will be going forward if this one passes and the community effort that it will take in order for that to happen. And I just think that's a really beautiful thing and something that truly makes Boise a unique place. So very excited to do this and very thankful.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you, council. Thank you, Mayor, for bringing this forward. This is an easy yes for me. Meeting with voters over the course of my campaign, both for the legislature and for council, it's very clear to me that voters have a great deal of trust, left and right and center, of the city's stewardship of these funds and what they do with these funds. And the reason this is such an easy yes is I could just point to a 20-year history here of good stewardship of open space levy funds, and I can point to projects all across my district. Hyatt, the Settlers Canal Path, the acquisition of the Fry Street property, and pending proposals for, related to Spalding Ranch and pathways around there. So this is a great opportunity to continue on the success of the last 20 years, and I look forward to hearing how voters feel about it this fall.
Well, thanks, everybody. I won't be voting, and I won't be voting, because when there's not a tie, I don't, I only vote when there's a tie. And, but I did want to say a couple of things. First off, Councilmember Willetts, the Centennial Neighborhood Association is in the House. I'm looking at him right now. And I thought it was really special, actually, that we did find money. I found money with parks. Council found some money to finish Chuck McDevitt Park. Chuck McDevitt was a former Republican State Supreme Court Justice, state senator, and the chair of the first foothills open space committee. So kind of cool, actually, to have it come together where tonight we're finishing up the Chuck McDevitt Park, as I love to call him. And at the same time, the council is considering the next foothills levy. But now, because the first one was foothills open space only, since then, we've evolved. And we have recognized that open space means all sorts of different things. We've been wildly successful as a city. I credit the mayors that came before me, the commissioners. Like tonight, we reappointed people to the Open Space Committee that have helped us leverage those dollars. So $20 million over the course of two levies that Boisians have said yes to open space, yes to clean water, yes to Boise. And with that, we have over $40 million worth of land and easements that have been set aside for perpetuity for our kids and grandkids. And I said in my State of City, my son, like, say, he was forged by Boise. He has stories galore of the time that he got to spend running up the street, as I like to say, 10 minutes to park safely, but then into the trails. And it is what brings him home, and it does the same for my daughter. We want to do the same thing for their kids in the future. And with this, as we've said, now we are investing in pathways, because pathways are open space, and they connect our residents to other open space. We've invested in clean water projects along the river in partnership with nonprofits, because we want to take care of what makes this place so special. And that's what Boisians do. And of course, we've invested in open space. And so, while I don't get to vote today, it's truly an honor to recommend that we put this on the ballot and to bring this to council. And because of the impact it's had on my own family, my own life, the impact that it has on every Boise neighborhood. When I knocked doors in 2015, as Councilmember Willetts said, you can see those hills in such a beautiful way from all parts of Boise, better than you can downtown. And people have said yes, time and time again. It's an opportunity to ask Boise to say yes again for open space, clean water, parks and pathways. And it's wonderful to see so many people here that have been a part of this history and legacy that we have as a city of taking care of place and taking care of people. And I'm really excited to talk with Boisians again in my own time about what this means for the future for our kids and grandkids as we continue on the legacy of protecting public land, clean water and pathways, open space here in Boise for our kids and theirs. So thank you.
Ted.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
Corliss.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. And we ask that people, I appreciate it, but we ask that people not do the clapping, groaning, all the things, even when it's good. But thank you all very much. I really.
That was my fault. I was clapping, so.
Oh, you were clapping!
Yeah, so I'll take the blame. I'll take the blame for it.
Okay. We're going to move now into ordinances.
Madam Mayor, I move that further reading of ORD 22-25 and ORD 23-25 be dispensed with, and the record reflect that they be read the full time in, the third time in full.
Second the motion. Clerk?
Excuse me. ORD-22-25, an ordinance emitting Boise City Code Title V, Chapter 12, Section 49, to amend foam protection requirements and providing an effective date. ORD-23-25, an ordinance CAR 24-00015 for property located at 851 East Bramier Road, annexing .744 acres of certain lands and territory situated in Ada County, Idaho, adjacent and contiguous to the corporate limits of the city of Boise City. Establishing and determining the land use classification of said .744 acres is R-1B residential suburban. Establishing and determining the sensitive lands overlay district of said acres, setting forth a reasoned statement in support of such annexation and zone change, directing the city engineer to lodge and file a legal description and map for said annexed lands and territory. Providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Auditor, the Ada County Treasurer, the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission, providing that a copy of said legal description and map of said land, if said annexed lands and territory be recorded with the Ada County Recorder and filed with the Ada County Assessor and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law and providing an effective date.
I'm going to ask folks in the lobby, could you shut those doors? Mike Lanza? Great. Thank you, Ed. All right. All right.
Oh, Madam Mayor, I move that ORD 22 dash 25 and ORD 23 dash 25 be approved.
I'll second the motion.
We have a most and a second clerk.
Dead.
Yes.
Willis.
Yes.
Corliss.
Yes.
Halliburton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. And next up, we are going to move into our public hearings for our budget hearing. And we will have a presentation on the budget. And then Alicia, will you let me know, are we doing the, um, budget hearing, the forgone property tax, public hearing? And the increased fee hearing all at once? Are we dividing them up?
Madam Mayor, we're dividing them up.
All right. Okay. Um, just before Alicia begins the presentation on the budget, I do want to thank, um, by name, members of the team that have been, have worked so hard to get us to this point. First off, of course, all of our department directors, um, work day in, day out to serve the city, lead teams, um, and help with the budget. But our finance team really, um, has a tremendous task every year, pretty much constantly to make the budget possible. And I want to thank Eric Bilmorea, our Director of Finance, Alicia, you too, the Director of Budget, Jesse Stevenson, Justin Erickson, Travis Black, Kim Nak, Kim Nakamura, Mike Shurak, Patrick King, Kira Nielsen, Maggie Smith, Sarah Butler, Brandon Records, Chrissy Floyd and Lisa Owens. Some of you are here, some of you aren't, but you go above and beyond, really appreciate all the work that's gone into making this budget document possible that we'll be discussing tonight. Alicia.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Tonight we'll be presenting the 2026 budget. And we'll be holding the four public hearings. This presentation that I'll walk through, uh, will cover the major themes, financial strategies and key funding decisions that shape this balanced budget. We'll also cover the property tax recommendations, proposed changes to fees and charges, the development impact fees, and then the next steps in the budget process. This timeline shows the progression of this year's budget process. Council workshops began in March, um, and continued through June culminating in today's public hearing. The final budget adoption is scheduled for August 26th. This timeline also reflects our public engagement efforts, which included an online feedback tool launched in April. The 2026 proposed budget was released on June 13th and is available on the city's website. In addition to tonight's public hearing, uh, the public can explore the budget using our open book transparency tool, which includes prior year budgets as well, um, and FY 2025 data for comparison. So as we developed this budget, we faced some significant challenges. Revenue growth is not keeping pace with rising costs, um, especially in areas like insurance, software and personnel costs. Deferred maintenance on aging infrastructure continues to grow. And at the same time, we're not, uh, we're navigating, um, some economic uncertainty and legislative changes from the state. With fewer than 2% of general fund revenues available for new investments, uh, we had to prioritize very carefully. The reason for such little available revenue, um, is illustrated here on this slide, uh, with the tension between revenues and expenditures. So here you'll see the cost growth outpacing revenue growth. So while we have some influence, um, over things like employee compensation, um, other factors like insurance, percy costs and, uh, repairs and maintenance are largely outside of our control. And our approach in this budget is to manage the things we can and plan for those that we can't. So with that in mind, um, our budget strategy focused on four key goals. Minimizing disruption, ensuring long-term financial stability, addressing the most urgent needs and building resilience to future, for future risks. So looking big picture, the total proposed budget for FY 2026 is just shy of $950 million. The general fund is the city's primary operating fund. That's where our property tax dollars go. Um, and the focus of the presentation this evening, um, and it is $331.3 million. The capital fund is 51.4 million, um, and that is up significantly from 2025. Enterprise funds make up 54% of the city's spending, um, and that includes, uh, funds such as the, the airport fund and water renewal fund. Uh, the proposed budget includes 16 new positions for the city, bringing the total FTE count, uh, for FY 26 to 2,133 and a quarter. Um, the budget before you this evening includes the amendment directed by council, um, at the June budget workshop to use the unspent council strategic planning contingency funds in fiscal year 2025 to support community engagement, uh, for their newsletter work and pathways planning in fiscal year 2026. So moving now to general fund revenues. General fund revenues, um, in the proposed budget are 33, uh, excuse me, 331.3 million. A modest 1.1% increase from fiscal year 2025. As I said, our largest revenue source, property taxes, they are proposed to increase 7.6% over the fiscal year 2025 budget. And I'll explain why in the next slide. Departmental revenue is projected to increase 2.8%, primarily due to higher reimbursement rates for public safety contracts, um, due to higher costs and also higher participation and fee adjustments in parks and recreation. We're projecting slower revenue increases and even decreases across other revenue sources, um, such as, uh, sales tax, similar to 2025, staff anticipates it to grow 1% in 2026. Liquor tax revenue is projected to decrease by 13.3% due to reduced consumption. Other revenue is projected to decrease by over 50% um, due to the city not budgeting for federal ARPA funds in 2026 relative to 2025. And then finally, carry forward, as you'll see, is lower than 2025 due to lower than, uh, lower vacancy rates and, um, more precision in our budgeting for operating. Um, so now turning to the property tax plan included in the 2026 budget. It includes three components, um, the first being a 3% base increase totaling 5.7 million, primarily to support our, our core services. The second component is proposing to recapture, um, uh, previously forgone taxes at a total of $2 million. So this is when less than the max property tax, um, is taken in any given year. The city council is allowed to take that in a future year, uh, of course, with some restrictions. So we are using that untapped capacity in this budget to, um, address some pressing needs in the areas of public safety, um, and capital. And then the third component is, um, we are, uh, there's an additional 6.4 million from new construction growth. Um, and this includes the River Myrtle and Old Boise Urban Renewal District, um, which is sunsetting this year. The fiscal year 2026 budget includes continued funding for the city's property tax rebate program. And Boise is the only city in Idaho that offers this program, which is tied to the state's circuit breaker for eligibility. A $900,000 allocation is included in the budget. Though rebates for in-home childcare providers are no longer allowed due to, uh, new state legislation prohibiting the city from licensing in-home childcare providers. So I previously mentioned the budget includes levying the forgone property taxes. And the, that property, those property taxes will support three priority areas. As you can see here, technology advancements, enhancements for police systems and an AI pilot. It will also increase the annual transfer to the capital fund for critical repair and maintenance projects in city facilities. And, um, it also includes additional support for valley regional transit. Now turning to the expend, general fund expenditure side of the budget. The total general fund budget is, again, just like revenue balance budget at 331.3 million dollars. 71% of the budget goes to personnel costs. 19% um, covers maintenance and operations and major equipment. 7% of the budget is transferred, um, primarily to the capital fund. And then 3% is for Valley Regional Transit, VRT. So this slide shows how the 331.3 million in general fund expenditures, um, is distributed by department. The largest share, um, continues to go to police, fire and parks, um, which are central to maintaining public safety and the quality of life here in Boise. The expense budget overall is 3.7 million or 1.1% higher than fiscal year 2025. Now I'll just briefly cover, cover some of the changes included in the general fund 2026 budget. So as I mentioned, there are 16 new positions in the 2026 budget. There are six for police, four to support the new ERP system, two in, uh, the forestry department within parks and recreation. There are three revenue neutral positions, um, in parks and finance. And then one new position for the city clerk's arc office. So these are targeted investments that are tied to the priority areas of the budget, um, of risk and safety and key strategic initiatives and operational capacity, um, for service delivery improvements within the city. I'd like to note that this is the fewest number of positions to be proposed in a budget, um, in over a decade excluding COVID year 2021. So in addition to the new positions and the items funded with the forgone, um, there are several other general fund changes that are worth mentioning. Just a few highlights. One, a $2.2 million transfer to the capital fund, um, for critical major repair and maintenance projects. A $1.5 million increase to the workers' compensation fund to support the sustainability of that fund. And then other critical investments, uh, focused on risk and safety and median service level expectations, um, in the community. Within the capital fund, um, the, the total capital spending within the capital fund for 2026, um, is 46 million. And this includes increases in both equipment and repair budgets. We're investing 10.1 million or 22% of the capital budget in major repairs and maintenance. That's more than double the 10-year average. We're investing 26.4 or 57% in capital projects to improve city facilities. And that includes funding for the rehab of, uh, the Boise Depot and the City Hall Garage. And then finally, 9.6 million of the capital budget or the remaining 21% is for major equipment. So this slide covers more specifics on the 9.6 million in major equipment. Public safety drives half of the major equipment budget with, which, um, for FY 16, or excuse me, FY 26 includes, um, 31 police vehicles and two fire engines. But we're also investing in parks, libraries, IT, um, and the city's fleet vehicles. FY 26 budget, um, as I mentioned, makes an increased investment in major repairs and maintenance at 10.1 million. So we're addressing deferred maintenance needs now to avoid costly, uh, repair and emergency repairs in the future. It also aligns with the overall budget strategy of building resilience and safeguarding essential services within the city. Parks and facility maintenance is a major focus. Um, this includes one and a half million dollars for green belt repairs and $800,000 for hazardous tree removal. We're also addressing critical building maintenance needs across City Hall West, um, the Boise Art Museum and other facilities. Capital budget also includes discrete projects that total 26.4 million in 2026. The pie chart shows the largest share, 15.8 million dedicated to parks and recreation projects. That includes eight and a half million for the Whitney Pool and $3 million for Alta Harris Park, which is funded by impact fees. Other highlights include 2.2 million for A Street Streetscape work and funding, uh, to start the initial implementation of the ERP system. So this slide summarizes, um, how the budget aligns, uh, with investments in the key priority areas. So from capital and staffing to tax policy, software and risk management, each area of the budget reflects the deliberate choices that balances today's service demands, uh, with the long-term financial stability. So with that, Madam Mayor and council members, we have two public hearings. The first is on the proposed budget. But I am happy to stand for any questions in advance of that.
Any questions for Alicia? All right. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I have a few questions.
Yes, yes. Sorry, sorry.
All good. Um, Alicia, thanks for the thorough presentation. Um, I have a couple of questions that I think would just help the public understand. Because some of the budget language can feel a little wonky. Can you talk about how a position can be added but be revenue neutral? What does that mean?
Yes, Madam Mayor, uh, Councilmember Willis, thank you for the question. So a, a position could be added but revenue neutral when it is bringing in revenue to cover the cost of that position. So for the parks positions, for example, it'll be offset by revenue that's being, uh, that's coming in from, um, the, uh, sunsetting of the, um, uh, URD. And for, uh, finance, there is a treasury, treasury position that will be offset by additional revenue income that will be generated from, um, investment income that, um, will be generated, um, from this position focusing on the cash flow portfolio of the city.
Thank you. Um, Madam Mayor, I have a couple others.
Yeah, just you can go through them all.
Okay. One of the things that, uh, you know, we talked about last time was Valley Regional Transit. So the city has an ordinance that we set aside a certain amount of the budget that goes towards that. And you know, one of the things that I, we talked about last time is when the city chooses to take forgone, Valley Regional gets part of that too. Um, could you walk us through that? And why? Like, is it because it was part of four, it was part of what was possible to begin with? And it's not considered a separate appropriation? I think that would help us with clarity.
Are you, are you able to do that?
I will start with my, uh, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Willis. It's my understanding it's the, the policy of council to, um, dedicate 5% of property taxes to, uh, VRT. And so that in our, uh, of our property tax levy, uh, that's 5% as well as 5% of the, uh, forgone. But if my mis, if I am misunderstanding.
And, and the reason I asked if you were able to is just because this ordinance and everything else predates you. This is the week of the first budget, um, cycle and you came mid-cycle. You're doing a great job. Yes, you're correct on that. That, that is the reason. And I would say on this as well, we're actually, um, the number that of we're at, we asked that Valley Regional Transit, um, dropped their request slightly because they, they would have liked to have taken the whole amount. And some of it was set aside for future capital projects. And we had a discussion with them about not asking us to do that. Um, and so really looked at the bare bones, a minimum in the spirit of the policy that council has. Keep going.
Thank you. And Alicia, you are doing a great job because I know that this is, um, this is on the spot. Um, so if I'm, if I am a, a regular citizen and I've listened to this presentation and I say, and I hear a 50% increase in the capital fund, uh, I might not know that we've talked about in the past about you can pay now or pay later, pay now or pay later. Meaning if you can fix things now, they're going to cost a lot less or than if you fix them later. If you were just to see someone, one of your neighbors and they said, oh my gosh, Boise is, is, is spending 50% more in capital projects. How would you explain that to your neighbor?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Willis, um, yes, uh, the, we are investing 50% more in, in major repairs and, and maintenance in this capital budget. And, and the reason being there, um, is a backlog of deferred maintenance projects, um, amongst, uh, our, our city's, uh, infrastructure portfolio. And so this is really a targeted effort to, to get at that backlog. Um, and so we say that for every dollar invested in, um,
And so we say that for every dollar invested in deferred maintenance, you're really saving three to four dollars in the future of replacement and emergency repairs costs. So we're we're trying to be forward-thinking here and it's it's cheaper to fix it now than than to replace it later.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Those that's all my questions right now.
Oh, great. Okay, thank you. Anybody else online? I'll go online first while I'm remembering folks are online. Nope, Council President? Nope, okay, all righty. All right, that's it for now, question-wise. Thanks, Alicia. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. So in this part, I've got some folks that signed up, but then others in the room. So I'll suggest that you I'm going to run through these folks that signed up and then anybody else that wants to testify. If you're in the back, I'd ask you move towards the front so we can move folks through a little bit more efficiently. Everybody's got three minutes and we'll go from there. First off, Lynn Bradescue and then Yao Yin and I think Vicki, but I can't tell what your last name is. Keen, great. And Jackie Davidson, you're all up next.
Good evening.
Hi.
I'm Lynn Bradescue. I live in the North End. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm here to oppose the proposed 26 budget, which raises serious concerns about sustainability and transparency. My analysis highlights five issues. Number one, excessive revenue growth. General fund revenue will rise 38% from fiscal year 21 to 26, far exceeding inflation, which is 22%, and population growth, 6.3%. Property taxes up 26.2% burden residents without clear justification for community priorities. Number two, unsustainable airport spending. Enterprise funds driven by airport expansion surge 108.3%. This risks prioritizing one project over critical needs like public safety or housing. Can the council explain this massive increase? Three, disproportionate staffing growth. Staffing will increase 16.2, 2.6 times population growth, suggesting inefficiencies. The new Department of Organizational Effectiveness, what is that? Its vague name, like something from The Hunger Games, raises red flags. What services justify this staffing surge? Four, lack of transparency. Volatile revenues like a 300.8% spike in other revenue and 117.5% rise in development fees lack clear explanations. Residents deserve to know how their money is used and if these funds are reliable. Five, fiscal risks. The carryforward balance drops from 1.24 million in fiscal year 26, leaving little cushion if revenues falter. Volatile capital funding spending also questions long-term planning. I urge the council to align spending with inflation and population growth, prioritize essential services, and ensure transparency. Boise's budget must reflect our community's needs without straining taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you. And now Yao Yin. And then Vicki. Keen, I'm sorry, Keen. Yeah, great.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, council members. Page 51 of the proposed budget shows the annual expenditures by our legal department has grown from 2004 to 2006. The actual expenditure in 2004 is $8.68 million. The adopted expenditure in 2005 is $9.85 million, which is over $1 million more. The proposed expenditure in 2006 is even higher, which is $9.91 million. This growth coincides with my observation that the city has engaged in a lot of lawsuits recently. In determining the proposed budget, I would strongly recommend that the city look into the possibility of avoiding unnecessary lawsuits moving forward by making good policy decisions, especially those lawsuits against our constituents. It hurts the city's credibility and image because the city should advocate for, not against, the interests and the needs of the people who elected them. It also hit the constituents financially twice because they not only have to pay the legal fees to as a party to the case, but also have to pay the legal expenditure incurred by the city as a taxpayer. Therefore, I strongly recommend that the city avoid unnecessary lawsuits by making good policy decisions to reflect the interests and the needs of the constituents moving forward and reduce the proposed budget accordingly.
Thank you. Vicki Keen and then Jackie Davidson. And then after that, Larry Ice and Mark Salisbury.
Madam Mayor, City Councilmembers. I'm wondering how scrutinized the individual budgets are in the different departments under the city that are part of the city budget. Because the property taxes are just going nuts. Spending is going crazy. And getting around this city is a nightmare. The open spaces are great, but getting around the city is a nightmare. But that's a separate issue. But the individual budgets, department budgets under the city's purview, how how closely are those scrutinized to keep the costs down? Because everything is growing. And I just doesn't it doesn't seem like there's anybody watching that store to try and keep costs down.
Thank you. Jackie, welcome.
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Jackie Davidson and I live at 8107 West Canterbury Court in Boise. I'd just like to point out a few things about the budget. So last or this last spring, District One and District Two, Lucy and Colin had a town hall and I went to it. And one of the things that Councilmember Nash said was that they don't have any that you council members don't really have any aren't part of the process of the budgeting. And so I've really been thinking about that and was a little bit concerned. Now Lucy today kind of quell that because she's asking questions and she's obviously has looked through the budget. But I had the impression, and maybe I'm wrong, that you guys get the budget, sign it off. And it'd be really nice if you guys would be like a watchtower and just make sure that the expenses and everything is legit. Okay, so that's one. So I looked at property taxes because, you know, I pay property tax and that's important to me. And I noticed that since 2021, the property taxes have gone up 26%. And I hear a lot from some of my people that I know in this area in Boise that they would like to see the property taxes actually go down. So I know that the legislature has given people discount on their property tax and I appreciate that. But could Boise City Council do the same? You know, I'm seeing actually levies going on the ballot when, you know, where we are, you know, the the costs are going up, you know, whether it's home costs, groceries. You know, it's it's really affecting the people of Boise. And so it my my plea is just to reduce those property taxes if you can. Give us this the same kind of refund like I timer just went off.
We could pause for a second. You've got 20.
Yeah, okay, I asked West Ada Sewer Board.
You're ready again. I thought you needed to do something. We'll turn it back on.
Oh, hey, thank you. Sorry. It was mine.
Oh, it was your own timer. Okay. You're done then.
Anyway, I just have one last thing to say is that what I asked the West Ada Sewer Board, a member of the West Ada Sewer Board, why are our sewer rates going up all the time? It seems like it's going up $40 a year, every for every single year. And his answer was that that's Boise City that's raising the fees. So I just asked that you, you know, help give us a break. Quit raising the fees. You know, I don't like the levy that you're doing. I I love the parks. I take my dog to park, different park every day, and I appreciate it. So thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, Larry, welcome. And then Mark, you're up next. And then Jessica Saxon and I think Tana Wah, maybe, sorry, Downing.
Hi there.
Hi, Madam Mayor, City Councilmembers. I'm Larry Ice, 14048 West Talon Creek Drive. I have shown up at the budget meetings for the last several years to speak about McDevitt Park. I'd like to talk about it again.
Sure.
I'd like to thank the mayor and city council for completing McDevitt Park. They're starting on it as we speak. I'd like to express appreciation for the dog park change today. The park's gone uncompleted for 25 years and five administrations. I sincerely appreciate this administration for moving this project forward. I'd like to suggest one thing, though, and that is that the city consider a groundbreaking event.
Oh, definitely. Because that's what they say we like, right?
Yeah.
Just like that.
Well, I mean, a lot of different reasons. I would like the opportunity to express appreciation for the Boise Parks and Rec people that are moving this forward. I'd like to recognize Director Holloway as he steps aside. Maybe say a few nice words about Chief Justice McDevitt.
Yeah.
If I was an astute politician and I had a levy bill coming up about parks and open space, I would want that press this fall. On a second thing that I've spoke about before, too, and that is goals. I think we've heard a lot this evening.
I didn't hear, sorry.
About goals?
Goals, yeah.
You know, we've got a great, I mean, you're a very effective manager and you get things done when there's goals. I've had people asking questions about the budget because they don't understand where the money is going. What's the purpose? I look at it, you know, public safety. Is six detectives the correct thing to add? I don't know what the goal is, so I can't tell you. You know, we have departmental goals that are ambiguous at best. You know, things like expand access. How do we measure that? Increase impact. I don't know what that means. Measure value. I mean, that's a great place to start. Let's get some metrics and put it in the budget. I've never worked in the public sector. I've been in the private sector. And goals and budgets went hand in hand. If I wanted money and I was going to spend it, I had to have a goal to measure up against it. And that's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor.
Yes. Has a question, Larry.
Mostly just some gratitude. I want to I want to thank you for coming and and recognizing some of the work that we've done for and pushing for McDevitt Park. I know that Councilmember Willetts has been pushing hard for that. And I remember you coming to past council meetings. And it's sort of a testament to the effectiveness of showing up to those meetings and making those asks. And I want to recognize some feedback and maybe a note for for staff. I think staff has done a lot in the last in the last probably five or six years to make the budget a little bit more digestible than it has in the past. The budget book sometimes has gotten smaller just because some of the technical, you know, stuff there that's hard to make sense of. But it's good to know that it's still challenging. I think that for some of the council members here, we know some of the answers to those questions because we've been sitting through the series of budget questions and we know some of the goals of those areas. But I do think you're right. I think that there's some value in trying to figure out how we can make that in more of a narrative form. So you know exactly what those detectives are being used for. Specifically, you know, a few of those are actually used more towards youth and teens and addressing some of the increases in those areas. And it doesn't necessarily explain that in the book because all you see are really the numbers and and sort of like the stats and the graphs there. So I just want to say that that's that's really good feedback. It's good for us to know and probably good for staff to know as well that when we're looking at the budget, there's maybe some potential there for some narrative and more explanations that kind of highlight what those numbers actually mean. So I just want to say thank you for that that feedback. It was very direct and very specific.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, Mark, come on up.
My name is Mark Salisbury. I'm a resident of West Boise. I live at 13243 West Silverbrook Drive. I've been here before, asking that we fund a public library in West Boise. Two years ago, I and others presented a petition on this subject to this council and to the library staff. I'm not here asking for that funding today. What I would like to ask for is when we will have an answer on that petition. You might when will we know if the city will put a library facility in West Boise? You might say that Kohl and Eustick is that facility, but you can drive five miles mostly west and still be in Boise. Why is it taking so long? Two years ago, we were asked to be patient. Part of the budget that was approved that year was funding for a library facilities plan. The facilities study went to bid in the fall of 2023 and Group Four was selected in February of 2024. Group Four has done this kind of facilities plan for many cities. In fact, Dallas, Texas selected Group Four in 2023. A city of 1.3 million people with 30 branch libraries, 30 branch libraries and a growing population. Nine months later, they had a very detailed plan, which, like Boise, included citizen engagement in their plan. 2019 was a difficult year in Boise for the library. In some ways, it set any thoughts of library developments back. Boiseans made it clear that we did not want to spend $100 million on a new downtown library. I think the rejection of that project was all about the money. I don't think it was a rejection of reading of services libraries provide. I don't think it was a rejection of branch libraries. I think we need to move past 2019. I asked that we complete the facilities plan as soon as possible, ensuring that it is equitable and is what our citizens need and start planning on how to fund it. It's great that we're putting an open space levy bond up for election in this meeting. I've seen levies recently for fire stations, for sewer, open spaces, but I cannot recall the last time we've had any major capital funding for library or any levy. I would ask that we not neglect our library system. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Jessica Saxon. And then Tana Wah Downing. And are you representing yourself for an organization?
Myself.
Okay.
Thank you. My name is Jessica Saxon. I'm a civil rights advocate and litigator from Washington, DC. I'm here to provide public notice to you. This is in accordance with USCS Rules of Civil Procedure as well as Rule 17 and Rule 20 of the United States Supreme Court. The Constitution of the United States is the overarching requirements that every state must follow. I don't think anyone here would disagree with that. States are not able to enact their own alternative legislation and substitution for the guarantees of the Constitution. That would mean that your state laws are more powerful than the Constitution, and that is unlawful. Clause one of Amendment Five to the United States Constitution says that no person should be held to answer for a capital or otherwise infamous crime unless on presentment or indictment by a grand jury. However, the state of Idaho unfortunately has enacted its own alternative legislation that permits prosecuting attorneys and police officers to charge by way of information as opposed to indictment. That is unconstitutional. An emolument violation is when you pay a public official to commit a crime. There are two areas-
I'm sorry, ma'am. This is a what is the connection to the budget hearing?
The connection to this is that you guys are-
If this is legal notice, I'd ask that you do this with our attorneys.
Well, what this connection is, is that you just had a budget that is allotting funds to go towards your police department.
So we're funding the police and you're putting us on notice that the state has rules that are unconstitutional?
So if the state has enacted an unconstitutional law and then you're paying your public officials to break that law, then yes, that would be unconstitutional and thus unlawful and illegal. And so we are here under the the public hearing to provide to provide notice. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. You can't speak from out there. You'll have to come up here. Go ahead.
I can finish. Okay. So there are two articles, excuse me, there are two two areas of the Constitution that reinforces this. The one is Article One, Section 10, where it says that no state shall create any law that shall impair the obligation of contract. So your your police officers, your prosecutors, your judges, they're all under a contract. That was a contract based on their oath. The second one is the 14th Amendment that you'll find the reinforcement of this. It says that no state shall create or enforce any law that shall abridge the privileges or immunities of the United States citizens. Privileges and immunities of United States citizens are at a minimum those that are enumerated in the Bill of Rights and the First Amendment guaranteed and secured by the Constitution. So Mr. Tana Wah Downing, he is preparing to litigate this issue at the United States Supreme Court on behalf of more than 700,000 people currently imprisoned here in America unconstitutionally. So yes, I'm here to provide notice to you today that if you continue to pay public officials to break the law, that criminal sanctions can come from that. Nobody wants that. That's not- Nobody wants that. That's not where we want to go. Nonetheless, public officials must be made aware that if you continue to pay people to disobey the law, that is an emolument violation. It is unconstitutional, and it is illegal. I do have a notice that I would like to put on the record here. Thank you so much. Have a great day.
Thanks. Mr. Downing? And then we're open. So anybody else that would like to testify, please come join the front seat and we'll hear from you.
So, good evening. Thank you so much. So I have roughly 4,000, a little over 4,000 criminal affidavits on behalf of actual affected victims of this particular situation. We've been charged improperly in violation of the Constitution from right here in the state of Idaho. Many of them are from within the city of Boise itself. Now, this is per se crime, meaning that we don't have to show that they intended to breach their obligations simply by virtue of the breach, all elements of crime have been met because these public officials, they swore by oath or affirmation that they would fulfill a future outcome, which they have not as of this moment because they're relying upon an inferior state statute. So you guys prepare the budget for the law enforcement, for the police department. That's part of the budget that you guys are asking for right here. If those police officers are going out and relying upon an inferior state statute that directs them or permits them to abridge their obligations that are codified in the Constitution of the United States of America, they're committing a crime, right? It's called deprivation of rights under color law. It's very, very simple. So, you know, you cannot pay public officials to break the law. That's the emolument violation. We're providing notice to you guys. We're not trying to get anybody into trouble. We're not, we're not here confrontationally. We want to ask you guys to please step up and simply discharge the duties of your office, confirm the things we're saying by taking a look at Clause 1, Amendment 5, and then directing the agents to act lawful constitutional manner so we can avoid any further litigation. You know, the state of Idaho does not have the authority to create an inferior state statute and then go and enforce that in violation of the Constitution of the United States. So I, I know that you guys are going to go ask your attorney here in a moment, right? As soon as we're done, you guys are going to go ask your attorney. You're going to say, hey, is this true? That attorney's going to say, well, no, not really, because of a case from 1884 from the United States Supreme Court. It's called Hurtado versus California. And before you guys choose to rely upon that as the foundation, I want to remind you guys that the Constitution of the United States is the foundation, not a judge-made ruling. Judges do not have the authority to legislate. Therefore, when the United States Supreme Court chooses to create a ruling and then place it at the foundation through the amending of the Constitution of the United States of America in other than lawful manner, because we all know that you got to go to Article 5 to confirm the way in which you amend the Constitution of the United States. Any other way would be an unconstitutional act. Supreme Court of the United States has no authority to create a ruling, place it at the foundation, and, and, and direct all the states to, to act in, in, in violation of the Constitution of the United States. Any amendments to the Constitution must be done by an authentic act of people in accordance with the special meaning procedure of Article 5. So again, I'm going to go ahead and wrap it up here, but I'm going to ask you guys, please make sure that you look at the proper foundation and not the foundation that you guys are being directed to look at. Judges do not have the authority to legislate, right? We did not delegate that authority to the judicial branch. All legislative authority is vested in a Congress of the United States consisting of Senate and House Representatives. That is Clause 1, Article 1 of the Constitution of the United States. So again, I ask you guys, please step up, discharge the duties of your office, fulfill the obligations and promises that you made to the people of State Idaho, and let's enforce, recognize, and obey the Constitution of the United States of America. Thank you guys so much. God bless.
Thank you. Safe travels home. All right, the public hearing's open. And when, when folks come up, will you please, I need you to, oh, we should, we'll get some, we'll need, we'll get some sheets down there eventually, but please share your name. And then that's it. I'm not going to ask you to put your address online, but we'll have a sign-in sheet where folks can sign in after you've spoken.
Perfect. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Excuse me. I'm Kathy Graham. It's a pleasure to be here tonight, Madam Mayor, Council members. I currently serve as the president of the Centennial Neighborhood Association, one of your energized groups, and as the president of the Hubble Creek Homeowners Association. I'm here to speak tonight in support of our citizens in westernmost Boise. We firmly support the completion of McDevitt Park. We've been working hard on that. We are excited to see that come to fruition, anxious and encourage you to continue the funding and the completion of that park. We're also here to support pursuit of a branch library to serve those of us who are in westernmost Boise. We support all the work that you've done, that you're doing in the rest of the city, and we want to encourage you to complete these projects for the westernmost Boise residents. Again, that's McDevitt Park and a branch library in western Boise. I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. I am just here, I came for the clean water, open spaces, but I just wanted to say thank you. When I rode my bike home tonight, I'll go by the Goddard New Pathway, and it's nice not to ride in big puddles of water or rocks. I'm very thankful for that. I'm very thankful for the safe connections you have made in our city. I am so thankful for the composting. I get to walk to Kamba Park, drop off my composting. It's amazing. And I just want to say I'm so appreciative of the work that you're all doing and that you continue to do, and that it really is appreciated. I live in west, west Boise, too. I love that I can take the bus. I love that I can put my bike on the bus. I want a better bus, but I know that it's limited because nobody will ride the bus. And I tell people, alright, the bus. Anyway, thank you for all that you do, and I just wanted to say, good job. Keep it up. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Yeah, we didn't get your name, actually. I'm sorry. I didn't want to interrupt you, but thanks, Jordan.
Becky Walker.
Thank you, Becky.
Madam Mayor, I just wanted that because I want to thank you, Becky. I'll thank anyone that wants to evangelize about buses. So, thanks.
All right, anybody else like to testify? Okay. Well, thank you all for being here and listening. And with that, I'm going to close this public hearing.
Madam Mayor, I move that the appropriation ordinance for fiscal year 2026 be placed on the first reading calendar for August 12, 2025.
One second.
We have a motion and second discussion? Do you want to go?
Madam Mayor, I can.
I was going to see, oh, why don't we get Councilmember Hallie Burton and Casey Falls off?
Yeah, sorry, my internet might be a little bit unstable, so I'll do the, the best I can here, but let me know if I need to turn the camera off. First, I, I want to just thank the folks who came to the budget hearing tonight. I made a joke earlier about how we don't often get very many people to come to our budget meetings, and that's definitely the truth, and this was probably a little bit more than we normally get. And I thought that a lot of the comments were, were really good. Comments, you know, about the library, comments about concerns with staff, you know, comments about concerns even, even with transparency. There's probably a couple, you know, of things that I certainly disagree with, and I think that that, but the process is tough, you know, the budget process is tough. And I would say that I disagree that council doesn't construct the budget. We don't construct the budget from an operational sense. We're not going in there and evaluating every single department, but from the very beginning of the year, we're making it pretty clear about what our council priorities are to staff. Staff take those into account, and then through the course of several meetings, we start learning what the lay of the land is going to look like, the financial situation, what may be possible, what may not be possible, and we continue to give that feedback. And so what I would say is that maybe although council doesn't construct the budget operationally, what we do is we work as a filter. And we filter it through this process of presentations, feedback, presentations, feedback. And then I guarantee there's not a single council member up here who hasn't read through the entire large budget book, really trying to figure out case by case what happens. And I really want to acknowledge that that is really, really difficult for the public to see, and it's very difficult for the public to follow all those different steps along the way. And so I can see why there are concerns, you know, potentially in transparency or how the budget is constructed, because it is a complex, long, and drawn-out project. I, I would say that even some of the positions this year that we don't say are revenue neutral, and two examples would be the two positions that we're giving to forestry. I would actually say that those might be revenue neutral. Those are positions that right now we're actually contracting labor out for, and that we're going to be saving money from that contract labor. It's also people who are going to be going out and clearing out hazardous trees that create all sorts of different potential legal issues. And that was brought up by another person as well, is the policies that actually affect those legal issues and the cost of those types of things rising. We're doing that with those forestry positions. We're doing that with the, the maintenance of the green belt, the maintenance of these other buildings. One of the reasons why we see this large increase in cost of maintenance is to actually limit the risk and liability for those things. So I, I do see us doing those things, but I also understand those concerns because I think it is difficult to follow along. And maybe there's ways in the future where we can try to make that process just a little bit easier to see or a little more digestible for the public who isn't actually going to every single meeting or diving through every single page of the book. The last thing I would want to say is that I read through every single comment. I think there was probably around 200, 300 or so comments that we received online and in emails. And some of the overall themes that I heard was, was stuff related to public transit, to affordable housing, to enforcement of traffic laws, to safer streets, to speeding, walking and biking. There were quite a few conversations about pools. And I always say this every single year, but our budget really is a story of the city, a story of the city's values. And this is a year where I would say we probably have one of the least, you know, sexy, for lack, lack of a better terms, budget, where there aren't these big, huge projects that are getting done that we've seen before in the past. And so the story this year is really one of having to tighten up the belt in a pretty uncertain economic situation. It's something that I haven't really experienced in a council budget since, since 2020 during the pandemic, when we sort of saw some unknown influences and some consequences from state legislation that have made it really difficult to achieve some of the goals. And I just want to say that I'm really impressed with how staff has found a way to still accomplish some of these goals. We're still giving that funds, those funds to Valley Regional Transit to make sure people have access to the bus. We're still investing in pathways. We're still investing in fire. There's a lot of things that we are doing. And there's probably a lot of things that every single council member on here wishes that we could have done had there been more funding. I know four-person staffing is one of them. I know that there's a goal and a commitment to get that in next year. And I know that we're going to have to be really creative and do a lot of problem solving to achieve that. One of that's going to be through grants, grants for fire, grants for other public safety, grants for open space, grants for, you know, you name it, the pathways program. Across the board, we're going to have to be looking for other sources of funding because some of the federal funding and then some of the limitations from the state has made that really tough. And so I, I do think that we need to commit to some of those. I do think that we want to make sure that we see some growth in the four-person staffing next year. I think that we want to look at things like the Safer Grant. I think we want to be looking at other grants as well that allow us to achieve some of these projects that maybe we would have liked to have seen this year. But I still think it's a budget that we should be really proud of and a narrative that really shows a city really trying to take care of some of the issues the best that it can and making sure that we're looking at creative ways to move forward on a lot of these other projects. So I'm happy to support the budget this evening.
You want to go?
No.
Sure.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, thank you. I, unfortunate, hi.
If you guys haven't totally closed it out. We have. We just came up with a great idea that I want to. Oh, there's, there's another hearing, so, because we'll have a hearing on fees, so if you want, I'll, I'll let you come up then. Okay. Right. No, no, no. After, after, because we've already. It's over? Yeah, so like right now, we've closed it. There's a motion on the table, and so the council members talk about the motion, they vote, and then we'll be talking about fees, and you can come up. I'll make sure to call you up, Sam.
Okay, thank you. This is, I think, my third budget cycle with the city, and from my experience on this one, it's been the tightest budget that we've had. We're getting pressures from state and federal in the reduction of grants and funding and things like that. Also, as we all know, costs have gone up everywhere, which means that the city's costs for everything has also increased. So there were some, I would say that there were some concessions made on this budget. We definitely had to refocus and prioritize different things. And I think there was a lot of, arguing is too strong of a word, but lots of discussions behind the scenes on, you know, what, what we're fighting to fund, and we had those in the, we had those publicly in the workshops that we hosted. But this was a really tough budget cycle. And I think the other thing to know about our budgets is the fiscal year doesn't end until October, so this budget will begin in October, which means that I think even for the, like, the library plan, for example, if we, it's been two years probably since we heard from you on that, or we made a commitment to that. But then if you think about, it takes, you know, it might be a year and a half before that funding is initiated. So I think it's a little bit, it can be a little bit confusing on why. I mean, like, I've seen feedback even on the, the Federal Way Bike Path, you know, as something that was mentioned years ago and hasn't come to fruition. These things really do take a long time for us to move forward, and I think because of the way that we, when, the timeline of when we start the conversation on budgets to when we finish, that can kind of prolong the feeling of that as well. But yeah, I assure you that we, you know, I think that we fortunately over the last month or so have been receiving a lot of public comments through email, and a lot of the decisions I see investments in that support those, those sentiments that we heard. So I think it's really being, I think fiscal responsibility is one of the most important things that we do, and I'm really proud of the city and the staff for taking that into account in every decision they make, and I, and I'm excited with what, what we're making out of what we have.
Madam Mayor, I'll go next. Yeah, I want to thank, first of all, the staff that have worked really, really hard on this, and I would reiterate, too. I appreciate that question about how council engages in this, that we have been engaged in this quite a bit. If you like and subscribe to the City of Boise YouTube page, you can watch all those work sessions that go into kind of helping build this budget. And a lot of that context is there, and I know it's hard to, to be able to listen to an hour and a half of that, but, but do you want to thank all of our staff to put that together? And then I really want to thank those that engage, all of our neighbors. I believe, if I have it right, based on the survey responses that were sent to us throughout this cycle, we had about 300 responses or more than that. People had really good suggestions or concerns or questions. And I know you put that into that form, and then you probably don't hear anything else, and I wish I could reach out to every 300 people and respond some way or other. But know that we did see that feedback, and we did incorporate that into the things that, that we were concerned about and the direction that we provided. Some of the themes that stood out in a lot of that feedback are not surprising. They're similar in town halls or and other opportunities that we have to speak with folks, and housing is one of those particularly. I believe some of the testified tonight mentioned the airport budget and how maybe that money would go better towards housing. I wish we had that money for housing, but the airport budget is self-contained to revenues the airport gets. It can only be spent at the airport. It's basically a standalone entity. But I appreciate them recognizing the need for housing. A lot of folks mentioned how they were kind of disappointed looking at the data and the decline in the investments that we're going to be able to make in housing. A lot of that is just those opportunities going away that we were provided grants for, things like that. But I want to assure those folks that we have a team that works really hard to relentlessly seek opportunities to do impactful projects in housing, and that will be, that'll continue to be a priority for, for me on council as well. And I think outside of that, when we talk about affordable housing, we're talking about housing that is being subsidized by taxpayers, one or the other. It's land or housing construction costs or rental assistance, those kinds of things. We also have to be talking about how we let the market work. And so as we continue, this is somewhat tangential to the, to the budget discussion, but as we look at our zoning code and the impacts making that are, that are being made there, that's really important, too. And so I just point out that work that will continue to go into housing as well. The second one is public safety, police and fire. A lot of folks don't realize how big the budget that is and how important it is to a good community, and you look at our crime data and you look at the strategic plans, police is building and the fire have, and how impactful that is on our pocketbooks, too, not just our safety when you look at inference costs. And so I did want to just speak because we had a neighbor ask about those officer positions. In a prior work session, we heard specifically the critical areas. We needed these detectives to be able to help process cases. And so these were really thoughtful, specific things that were needed, and, and kind of to the point of goals, why are we adding these positions? You know, one of those positions will help with more reporting support. That right now our SROs are spending a lot of time in our schools doing reports instead of getting to know kids. And so when we think about goals, well, that engages to a goal that I think we all would have of more support for our kids at schools. And so kind of getting to a point where we can get full five-day-a-week support at schools is important. I do want to speak to fire. Our strategic plan called for a long-term plan to get to four-person staffing, and so we've adopted that, and we're moving forward, but it's not something that we're acting on in this budget due to a lot of the things that we talked about, the other priorities that are being brought forward. Four-person staffing has been talked about for a decade and a half or more. But it's important because it provides additional safety for our first responders to be able to have four show up instead of three, and it gets that third person instead of hanging out waiting for that next truck to show up. It gets them being able to respond. And it gets that third person instead of hanging out, waiting for that next truck to show up. It gets them being able to respond immediately with their buddy. And so we, this is, this is a priority for us and I, the can will get kicked down to next year. But I want to pour a little cement in the can so that it stays there. And really, um, you know, I want to see two, two stations in the next budget start moving towards four-person staffing. And then I will just, I will, I will just finish with transportation. I appreciate the testimony that was provided about public transit. And I hope folks realize how big that 5% of general fund is compared to the other cities in our valley. And so we're really, we're really pushing that. And I appreciate those people that are trying it. Just yesterday, I spoke with a older school teacher downtown who her whole life she had never ridden a bus. And she rode it yesterday because she was coming to a workshop downtown and she didn't want to pay $20 a day for parking. And she was just through the moon how easy it was for her to park in the mall and ride in for free because her school district covers it. And I just, I just think we can talk more about how impactful that is on people's, people's lives. And so continue to support the investments that we're making as a city there.
Madam Mayor. Yeah, thank you, everyone who came out to speak to the budget. I really appreciate that you're taking the time out of your nights to, to hang out with us and to provide your comments and input. What's interesting is especially when we, I think it was Larry who brought up more transparency. And I think it's just really better definitions of what we have in our budget. When we were first presented with this on council, I had a lot of the same questions. What are these positions for? And what are they covering? I think this next budget cycle, I think we can learn from that and say that any positions that we put in next year's budget come with a full description of their role. Along with being transparent and what that wages. And so we know how it'll impact the city. There are a lot of really, well, first of all, I want to step back and just say, give a round of applause and thanks to our finance department. They put a lot of work into this and it's a lot of information. As you know, it's, it's sometimes very difficult to digest. So on council, we put a lot of questions back to our finance department. It's very iterative. It goes back and forth and they do a really great job. I also want to call out the staff on council who also do a really good job fielding questions from the public, also from council to collect that information, including Amanda Brown, Emily Allen and Lauren Phillips. And I want to speak really quickly. Someone had a question on the property tax increases over time. And just to mention that it is the county's job to do the assessment of the value. And we've been seeing our housing values go up as we all know. And that's where you see people have an opportunity to go there and to talk to the county. And to make a case to see whether or not they feel that their property is assessed adequately. And then city council, I guess the city, Boise city does not assess the, the values. And I know sometimes that gets really confusing. But we do have an impact onto that, on how much taxes that we take. And the property taxes are the biggest revenue coming in, the fun, critical things like public safety. I want to highlight just a really, a few things I think are really great in our budget. We have a lot of really good positions from the city clerk that's very needed. It's a very small team of people. As Jimmy mentioned, the parks and rec, I had a question on that too, for two forestry positions. And as he explained, this is really benefit neutral. We're probably going to have a savings because we're outsourcing that today. And also want to mention that we are also putting significant amount into contingency, our operating contingency and economic uncertainty reserve is a quarter million dollars to help cover us because we don't know what's going to happen in the future. Specifically in District Three, I want to call out support for capital expenditure for Whitney Pool. And also for Liberty Park. It's an old park that's a little bit rundown, can use a little maintenance, use a little love and new equipment. And we were hoping to make this happen this next fiscal year. Bear in mind, just a minute here. Uh, one thing that when I mentioned was support for our fire department for four-person staffing, that's something that's been a priority. This is a safety issue and for our, for our Boise firefighters and for our community to help increase that response time. We've seen a lot of growth in Boise, a lot of new people and a lot of new buildings, a lot of new homes, a lot of new apartments, a lot of new commercial. And we need to make sure that we're staffing fire adequately to make sure that we can meet the response times that are expected out of the community. I can say I'm disappointed that we weren't able to find, to fund one fire station to four-person staffing. However, I know there's a lot of commitment from this council, mayor's office, the community to take a look at that. And I'll just echo council member Morales that our expectation for this next year is to really look at funding two fire stations to four-person staffing. And we just don't want to lose sight of that. We, this is very important. Of the 300 comments we received, over 30% of them were in support of public safety. So we want to make sure that we're honoring what our citizens are doing or requesting from us and making sure we're putting the dollars behind that. But with that, again, we're seeing a lot of good support in this budget. It's a budget I can certainly get behind. The six positions for our fire department or excuse me, for Boise, police are critical. We're taking some work off of our school SROs who are unable to be in the schools full-time because they're doing other investigations. So those investigators will be able to take that work. So we can see those critical resource officers in the schools. I appreciate everybody coming out and speaking tonight and we'll be putting my support for the budget.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you. And thanks for everybody who came out. When I went through my first budget cycle three years ago, no one came to the public hearing and I was shocked because this is a big part of what we do in the city of Boise is how we fund services. And so I'm thrilled that we've had so many more people. I'm so grateful for, you know, the folks in West Boise that continue to come and make sure that their voice is heard. And it's important, you know, we, if we don't hear from you, we don't know what you're thinking. We have to have that feedback loop. This budget is large. It's almost a billion dollars. And you know, I'm a fiscal conservative and there's been some budgets I voted for and there's been some budgets I haven't. And council is refining its budget process and needs to continue to do that. We don't, we don't vote by area, like we don't get a vote on parks and then police, we voted as one whole and it's not as big as some of the bills that have come through government recently, but it is big. There are some things in this budget I would have liked to have seen. I absolutely would have liked to have seen our library facilities plan completed by now. We have this very organic group of folks in West Boise that are begging for services there. I'm looking, looking forward to seeing the report, but I, I wish we would have gotten it earlier. I would have liked to have seen four-person staffing. I think California's situation earlier this year should be a wake-up call to every western state about what can happen to a community if we're not prepared. Those are things I would have wanted. Here's the things I really like. Public safety is my number one priority. And we get six new police officers. That is a win for Boiseans. You know, Chief Niemeyer, a couple of years ago, put together a presentation about like the tipping point for for cities and kind of when you get to a critical mass, if you don't have enough staff in the police, all the things that, that can go wrong. And we have a lot, way to go there. But we're in a really unique position in Boise because we are not growing like Meridian or Star or Middleton or Kuna. But people come to the capital city. So we, we have more people here that come and visit and we want them to visit. But that means Boiseans are going to have to pay more for that police because we have lots of visitors here. We need more police officers. We need more opportunity to continue to make our, our community safe. And so I'm, I'm a hundred percent in support of those positions. You know, the, the forestry positions have gotten some content or some conversation this time. Here's what I know. I know that forest management is a constant conversation and it is a particular conversation in the West. We are the city of trees. We have to manage this. And that fits into the fire danger and all of the things that we've talked about today. And so we need them. And I'm, I'm happy that the city is funding that. I also want to talk a little bit about capital funding and maintenance. Anybody, anybody who bought a home five years ago, six years ago, know what inflation's done. If you, if you did something six years ago, you got a better deal than you're getting today. Everything's more expensive and we know that. We have an opportunity as a city to get ahead of that, to, to get some maintenance done so that it doesn't cost taxpayers more money. We should do that now before it costs more money because things will go up and they have. The longer we wait, the more expensive it gets. Like I said, there's, there's, there's good and bad and ugly in all the budgets, but I think in this budget, there's a lot more good than various anything else. And you know, public safety is our number one priority. It's my number one priority. When we fund public safety, I support the budget. So I'll be giving a, a I vote.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Appreciate all the comments on this and look forward to passing this budget. And I look forward to discussing my comments at town halls with Ms. Davidson after this. But I just want to point out council fingerprints on some things here. First of all, one thing in this budget that's new spending, and I think it's the first time we've put ongoing general funds towards our pathways program. But that was a budget decision that we made last year that didn't get realized until this year in this budget. So there's $300,000 ongoing for the pathways program. Additionally, we've committed another 200,000 in one-time funds with the expectation that next year and next year's budget, there's an additional 200,000 in ongoing funds. That would be the equivalent of a half, half a mile of pathways a year, just, just in general funds alone. And those funds are a force multiplier because we're able to get additional grants to fund those pathways as well. So I know it's been a year since we've made that decision, but it's in the budget now and we're going to be able to pat ourselves on the back next year for that again. So as far as fingerprints on the budget, that was a motion we made a couple of weeks ago and a year ago. And I think my comments at the town hall were that it's uncommon after we've had a budget presented and, and moved that forward at a work session for there to be changes afterward. And I think that has less to do with dynamics between mayor and council or who's in the mayor's office than it does with, than it has to do with staff running a very tight ship. This is a very tight budget. There's not a lot of wiggle room here. I know there's been interest over the last few months in exploring four-person staffing, both by myself and other members of council. I think what I finally reckoned with a few weeks ago is when we set this at the work session and brought this forward for a public hearing that the revenue I was looking for to be able to fund that was not going to materialize quickly. And that in order for us to prioritize something like that, we'd have to take money away from other priorities. Either our property tax rebate program, which we're very proud of and happy with, capital funds, maintenance and operations, which is going to, for major repairs and maintenance, which is a, which is a legal liability for us. Or it would have to come out of the investments that we're making in the police officers. Because the budget as proposed is reflecting my priorities. I, I can't make that change today. So that's something that I, I have talked about in previous budget sessions, best way to eat an elephant is one bite at a time. And we have that problem with four-person staffing across the fire department. And so I would expect future budgets to be able to reflect the growing need there. But I appreciate the effort that's gone into that and the commitment from the mayor's office and from council and the fire union and fire command staff in seeking long-term solutions for four-person staffing, including federal resources such as the Safer Grant. Want to appreciate the public safety investments that are in here, especially with how they're targeted in the police department. I'm really excited that we have these investigative resources for crimes against children, domestic violence and special victims unit. And even financing technology. I think these are really critical investments in, in places that we absolutely need them to protect the most vulnerable members of our community who are victims of financial crimes, victims of sex crimes and domestic violence and, and child victims as well. So I, I think these are great targeted investments. And I also want to give a thanks to, this is something that's taken a while to materialize. It required council deciding that this was a priority, both, both in its budget setting, but also in CLA negotiations. And then it also required a police union to be able to get us to a place where we could find the resources to do this. So want to give a thanks to staff, council, police, command staff and the union and rank and file for being able to help us put that together. There's plenty of things in here that we could talk about. I'd invite members of the public who wanted to see councils fingerprints on this to come to our several budget presentations, workshops and council priority presentations where we communicate these things and communicate our priorities that go into the budget build. But looking forward to supporting this today and thanks to staff, especially Eric and Alicia for the conservative budgeting that they do and making a budget so tight that we can't find the cracks we're looking for. So thank you so much.
Well, thanks, everybody. I appreciate it. I just want to say a couple of things before the council votes on this. This is, this is a tight budget. And we've had years where we've, we've really run to ground as many grants as possible to make investments for Boise. It's allowed us to advance our housing goals, our electrification goals, other things. And we will look at Safer Grants as an opportunity in the future to add to our fire station staffing. And want to point out that the matches have changed. So that, that's a new kink because now we have to provide more in order to get grant funds. But over the years, we've done all that we can to chase as many federal dollars as possible to leverage the investments that Boiseans are making in this budget. And this budget, while it's tight, there's a lot of like good stories too. It's just that we don't have as many things because of the pressures of the legislature saying we can only grow our revenue by 3% when we all know that costs are growing so much more. But in this, we have investments in public safety, my number one priority. And after looking at a staffing study and strategic plans for the police department, we were able to come up with, I was able to come up with the chief and with the recommendation of these six positions. And we've also directed together with the council and myself, the department, both public safety departments to look at capital costs in the future. So we can have a conversation as well about how we fund, what we need to fund to make investments in stations in staffing together with the public beyond what a base budget that's allowed by the legislature can do. And so you'll see more about that as we seek to do more planning to get police stations and other things in our neighborhoods. This has investments in parks. It has investments in neighborhoods. It really is, as somebody said, a Boise story. I read those over 300 comments in, from residents and really truly loved reading them. Because in every one of those statements that you wrote to me and to council, I was able to hear the care that you have for the place that you call home. And we have so many similarities in terms of what we want to be able to see. We want to see parks. We want to see pathways. We want to know the officers that keep our neighborhood safe and also make sure that we have firefighters that are cared for and can care for us in our deepest, deepest times of needs. And on four-person staffing, we've heard a lot about that tonight. And probably a lot of people are like, what are you talking about? Well, for over 20 years, the police department and the union was asking for us to put four people on a shift. And after over 20 years of asking, I worked with the police chief, the fire chief, excuse me. I directed the fire chief to say, help us figure this out. And in that, after that first direction, I worked and presented a budget that put the first four-person staffing into a fire station. Just two, two, three weeks ago, we opened another fire station with four-person staffing at my, at my direction and with the budgets that have been approved. So yes, we will continue to work on that plan that it was a commitment I made when I was elected. It's a commitment that we're making good on together with the chief who's using data to make sure that we are making fiscally responsible decisions to grow the force that we have to take care of our firefighters, take, take care of our residents. And we'll see that over time with, if and with, we are able to chase grants such as Safer to help us do that to make it fiscally responsible and safe here in Boise. So in all of this, I really appreciate the staff for the work that was done. I called you out by name at the beginning. Without your help, hearing from, in the monthly strategic planning sessions from our, with our city council, from myself and from the public, what our values were, what our priorities were, you helped us. from myself and from the public, what our values were, what our priorities were, you helped us figure out how to do that and the constraints that we have. And because of that, we were able to present a budget for the city of Boise that reflects our values and that stays true to the investments that our residents are asking us to make. So thank you all for being here, for all of you that wrote notes and filled out surveys know that we read them and I really loved reading them. And thanks to the staff for helping us make this possible. Clerk.
Stead.
Yes.
Willet.
Yes.
Corliss.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
We're going to take a break before we pick up the other two items. Probably about five. We'll come back at eight. I'm going to be realistic. We've got, I'm going to call everybody up. Ask you to take your conversations out to the library. Thanks so much for coming tonight, everybody. I'm going to, we're going to try to wrap this up. Alrighty, the, we've got two more presentations. And I don't know, do we have a present, you, you presented on the foregone already. So we'll, I'll see if there's anybody here in the public, here to testify on the foregone. I'm just going to note for the record that it now, the public has left the room except for, I think somebody is behind, except for two people. And nobody is here to testify on foregone. Anybody online? Alright. And with that, I'm going to close the public hearing on the foregone and I'll take a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of RES 319-25.
Second the motion.
We have a motion, a second discussion. Clerk, will you call the roll?
Stead.
Yes.
Willet.
Yes.
Corliss.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. And now we have our new and increased fee hearing.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of.
Nope, nope. We, we got, we got to hear a little bit of stuff and I got to make sure that none of our staff want to talk on this and that there's nobody online. I believe, is anybody online for this item?
Madam Mayor, we have no one signed in online.
Oh, great. Okay. So I'm looking at everybody that's here at this hearing. That helps. Alicia, you give us an overview. I know council has reviewed this, but a short overview and I'll make sure that nobody's here to testify.
Madam Mayor, council members, I'll just provide a brief overview of the high points. We're here for a public hearing this evening for any new fees or charges that are greater than 5%. So this includes fees in the general fund as well as fees in other funds. So in the general fund, just as a reminder, there are, there is scholarship funding maintained for parks and recreation programs. There are no PDS fee changes proposed at this time. Overall, 1,385 total fees are included in the budget. There are 712 fees that are increasing. And that's primarily just to keep pop, keep pace with rising costs. 605 are unchanged, 23 are being eliminated, 42 new, and then three are decreased overall in the budget. For the enterprise funds, the water renewal fund is proposing a 9.9% increase overall. Solid waste, depending on the service residential, it's 9% increase. Commercial, 4%, and then industrial recycling, it is a 3% increase. I'm happy to take any questions on the fees or we can move to the motion.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Um, Alicia, can you talk to us about the ones that are being eliminated? The fees?
Councilmember, Madam Mayor and.
Willet's, it's all good.
Councilmember Willet's, thank you for the question. There are 23 eliminated. And I, I may have to get back to you because I'm not exactly familiar with the ones that are being.
She expected to get grilled on the other ones.
I get expected to get grilled on the other ones, but I can follow up on exactly why they're being eliminated.
I just think that's, I know that you're not Google and you don't have everything memorized, but that's interesting to me because typically we don't often see that with fees being eliminated. So I just wanted to learn more and yeah, follow up. That'd be super. Thank you.
It looks like Google's coming up.
Yeah.
Oh.
We've got Eric Balmoria jumping up.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Willet's, it is somewhat unusual to see fees being eliminated. While I can't speak to all 23 of those line by line, oftentimes we see fees being eliminated because, because the structure has changed. So you change maybe the basis for the charge from one thing to another. It may not be that the overall service that we're charging for is going away. It's usually just a structural change as opposed to anything else.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks. Any other questions?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
All this, all this notes for Councilmember Willet's, I think a lot of them are related to childcare.
I was wondering that. I just didn't want to speculate.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, now I'm going to open up to the public. Sam, you are welcome to come up and, and share your idea.
Well, I just thought of an idea when they were talking about the budget cuts.
And will you share your, your name with all of council?
Yep, Sam Marmon. I live in West Boise, 12732 West Mercedes Court. And I just wondered if you guys might consider to put out a proposal because some people, even though they love working full-time, they might consider working just a 35 or 30-day week and you could save a lot of money there because even though they probably love their job, they would maybe like to have a five or eight hour less a week. And they probably make about the same amount of money and they could spend a little more time with their kids and you guys could save a lot of budget. Also, there might be a couple of vehicles left around, you know, that you really don't use every week. You could just sort of sell them off. And I'm sure there's a lot of little things that you guys haven't thought about and you really don't want to do it. But anyway, I know as a working woman, there were a lot of times I'd just go, oh, if I just had an extra five hours to myself every week, it'd be great. So just something to think about. And that way you wouldn't be pushing people out, but you could make it their idea and then they might really love it.
Thank you. Alright, is anybody else here to testify on this? Confirm nobody's online. I'm going to close the public hearing.
Madam Mayor, I think that leads me next. I move approval of resolution 320-25.
Second.
And with these motions, we are moving to move them for public hearing, correct? For public reading.
Correct.
Yes, great. Alright, is there any discussion on this?
Madam Mayor.
Oh. Go ahead.
Okay. Thanks, Jimmy. I'll just say briefly that I think that, you know, pulling property taxes and increasing fees are certainly not something that I like to do or take lightly. As you've heard tonight, we're really making the most out of what we have right now. And most of our programs are, are revenue neutral. And so increasing the fees is really just continuing to offset the increased costs that we're experiencing across the board. I appreciate as a resident of our city, I appreciate the services that are provided to all of us. And, and that's unfortunately tonight, seeing increases in many of those areas due to those increased costs that we're experiencing. But I appreciate the feedback that we received that helps guide this direction and appreciate those that came out tonight and are still sticking with us tonight.
Yeah, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
A couple of things here. One, I just want to sort of highlight Sam's comment that she just made. We have our Department of Organizational Effectiveness. Not to be confused with the other one that sounds similar at the federal level that actually does stuff just like this. They're evaluating these small ideas for these incremental improvements every which way we can. I think that that group is going to be doing some double time work this year and like all sorts, the whole idea is that there's no bad ideas. And so these are the types of things that we want to make sure that we're considering. So I love it when people have an idea to share. I think that that's, you know, one of the things that helps us do a better job and helps us come up with solutions to, to problems. So just wanted to highlight that. A couple of other things. I sometimes wish that our fees could be revenue generators to fund some other things that we do in the city and that, that really just isn't the case. They actually have to just cover the cost. They can't be revenue generators. And so when we see these increases, they really strictly are to the increases of the cost of either running the programs or possibly expanding them. So if we've got, you know, a new program, the arts and history may be offering at the James Castle House or something along those lines. Those fees have to cover the cost of that new program and they actually can't, can't exceed that and generate revenue. And then the last thing I want to bring up is just again, highlighting Parks and Rec's work and making sure that those scholarship programs are available. So there are several hundred people who don't pay these fees because they don't have enough funds to pay for play camp or a variety of other things that we offer and those scholarships are there. That's something for us to continue to look to expand into other areas, whether it's new programming that we're offering through arts and history or other places where they may be fit. So that may just be something to have on our radar as well as that we've got great success that we've shown through these scholarship programs that Parks and Rec has done for years and years and years. It may be something for us to examine in some other areas for those who may not be willing to pay. Other, other than those comments, very happy to approve these.
Madam Mayor. When we, when we think about foregone taxes and whether or not we want to take that, I know everybody in council, mayor's office and, and even finance, we take a really hard look at that. We don't want to see, no one wants to see those taxes increased and they're heavily scrutinized. When we take a look at this, a majority of this amount is going to be used for our capital projects. Thinking of maintenance and repair that have been mentioned earlier. And we all know if you taken, tried to hire someone to fix anything on your property or anything in a house or car, anything costs have gone up. And it's a realization with the city as well. We're, we're going to pay more for maintenance operations than what we had anticipated years ago. So increasing these funds is necessary to allow us to have the maintenance and not continue to defer for it's a larger cost later and introduces risk to our citizens. So as councilmember Stead said before, it is really a cost savings when we're able to get to this sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Madam Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to quickly to foregone and that capital topic, I just, you know, the common phrase of you fix your roof when the sun's out is important here. And I think what's also important is just highlighting the reason for that infusion. That big jump is because expenses have been outstripping what we've been doing before. So this, it, this is the second best time to be kind of rising to, to meet that need. And then just in terms of fees, I just want to thank everyone that looks through these each year. There are a lot of them and you can find them at the end of the budget book and you can see which ones are going up. And, and it's actually fun to look through these things because you realize how much awesome stuff our city does or how many services they provide. And you know, one of those increasing fees, I'll note, I'm glad me and councilmember Hallie Burton did our pickleball lessons last year because that's going up $3. But you know, you look at that, that fee and it's actually not completely covering the cost of that, of that lesson or the multiple lessons that we had. And a lot of these cases, it's not covering all of it. And so I do appreciate that these fees do, do go to these services and it's fun to look through there and see all the opportunities we have.
Alright.
Madam Mayor, just a point of clarification. So this particular item, the new and increased fee hearing is not moving to the reading calendar. Rather, we just need the approval of RES 320-25.
Okay, which is what you said. Yeah. And then I saw this association thing, so I thought it was a reading thing. Okay, yes. Clerk, will you call the roll?
Yes, thank you. Stead.
Yes.
Willet's.
Yes.
Corliss.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Alright. And now we have another one.
Madam Mayor, council members, we have one final, fourth and final.
I almost missed it because it was under the large, large print resolution. Okay. Yes, we've got the impact fee hearing.
The development impact fee. So the city assesses fees when growth occurs for fire, police and parks for investments in the city. And the fees are adjusted annually based on the building cost index. And for FY 2026, the index rose 1.6%. And this adjustment was recommended by the Development Fee Advisory Committee. The proposed budget includes 5.3 million in impact fee usage for parks and infrastructure projects, including Alta Harris Park, Spalding Ranch and Liberty Park. So with that.
Great. Is anybody here to testify on this? Online. Alright, I'll close the hearing.
Madam Mayor, I move that the changes to the development impact fees for fiscal year 2026 be placed on the first reading calendar for August 12th, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Clerk?
Stead.
Yes.
Willet's.
Yes.
Corliss.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Madam Mayor, I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, we are adjourned. Bye, everybody. Good night.
Windows not just.